Call this meeting to order, the Rockledge City Council Regular Meeting, Wednesday, May the 2nd, 2018, and it is 6:00 PM. City Clerk, you want to call the roll, please?
Mayor Price.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Ferguson.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Forrester.
Here.
Councilman Daskey.
Here.
Councilman Hartzell.
Here.
City Attorney Manick Leir.
Here.
City Manager Fettro.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, please stand for our invocation tonight by Councilman Ferguson, and he has a special guest he's going to introduce as well. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Before we go into our prayer this evening, we'd like to observe a moment of silence for the memory of Larry Schultz, who passed away on April 26, 2018. He served the city well from 1977 to when he retired in 2011. Thank you. Larry will be missed. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you Pastor Marvin Kemp. He and his wife Nicole, they serve in this city as senior pastors of the Kingdom is the church, and it's located at 979 Ister. I believe Pastor Kemp said they've been pastoring here in this city for 16 years. We welcome you, sir.
Thank you for this opportunity. Father, we thank you again for these men and women that you have chosen to lead, God, in this county of Rockledge, city of Rockledge. We pray, God, that you would continue to honor these men and women as they stand, God, in leadership here. We pray, God, that you would lead them in the right way, that they would have wisdom, God, to deal with situations that come up, God. We thank you for covering this city, Rockledge, with a special covering, God, from keeping violence and a lot of gang violence and all sorts of different attacks of the enemy that may come up against cities. We thank you, God, for covering us and keeping us. Now, Father, as they continue to lead, you lead them with the Spirit of excellence, God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Sleet flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The council has before them the minutes of the regular meeting, April 18, 2018. What's the pleasure, the council?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on Wednesday, April 18, 2018.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Presentations. We have a special night tonight. We have a night that we recognize our Boy Scouts that are making Eagle Scout tonight, and that's something that we take very seriously in the city of Rockledge, and we always appreciate them coming out with their troop and experiencing this with us as we are tonight. But I'd like to recognize somebody that's going to help me with certificates tonight, our State Senator Dorothy Huckel. She's Senate District 14, state of Florida. And also former Councilman Pat O'Neill. Okay, what we're going to do, folks, we're going to have a special recognition for the Eagle Scouts tonight. And when we call your name, you come forward here. I will be at the first one. I will hand you our city certificate. You will then move down to the senator. The senator will hand you her state certificate. And then we'll have a picture. The parents are allowed to come up at that time and take photos. Just come right up to the front right here, and you can have your photos of your child with us. And then we'll do a group shot with everybody at the end, okay? Brenda?
Okay, parents, are you all okay? First up will be Christopher Comolletti. Next is Alexander Joseph Kopola. Noah Hurwick. Terrence Martin. I think I overheard part of that where he said for 25 years of service, the Scouts are giving Pat O'Neill a pin as well.
Oh, wow.
Jeffrey Owens. Matthew Schmidt. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, before you... Before y'all stop, Mr. Mayor, I think there's one other thing that they would like to present as well. So...
Sir?
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to be able to celebrate our Eagle Scouts. Eagle Scouts, you can get up if you like. It's okay. You don't have to stand up. As was mentioned, Mr. O'Neill was presented with a special mentor pin. Mr. O'Neill has been part of Troop 321 for many years and has operated the last five years specifically as an Eagle Mentor. This is a small sample of the 27 Eagle Scouts that he has personally mentored through Troop 321. He set as a personal goal to reach 25, and he did that. Terry Martin, who presented him with that sterling silver Eagle Mentor pin, which signifies 25 years, in this case, 25 Eagle Scouts. On behalf of Troop 321, Mr. O'Neill, if you'll please come here. We'd also like to present you with this certificate of appreciation to Thomas Patrick O'Neill. In case you didn't know, his name is Thomas. On behalf of Troop 321, to say thank you for your years of dedication, not only to the troop, but specifically to the lives that you have affected for a very long time. Your legacy will live on. Thank you very much.
I've never missed an opportunity, and I don't think I ever will. I wanted to just say two things. One, I attended an Eagle Scout Court of Honor a couple of months ago, and Congressman Bill Posey was there, and he posed a question to the audience and the Scouts. Do you know how many Scouts have been given this award in this nation this year? None. Each of them earned it. Nobody has given Eagle. Well done, men.
Senator Huckel would like to say a few words.
Thank you so much. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for allowing me to participate in this wonderful event tonight, and thank Pat O'Neill very much for the very special invitation. Congratulations to these fine young men, and especially to their parents, their families, and their friends, because this is usually a family affair. I obviously was a Girl Scout, not a Boy Scout, but I know how important scouting is in history and how important it remains today. So you have a momentous occasion to celebrate, and your entire community is behind you. On a different note, I do want to say that... I want to say a special word about you're a mayor and city council. You know, I'm state senator for this area. I serve north and central Brevard, and I do a lot of work with your council and your mayor and your city manager and your assistant city manager and the great staff they have here tonight. They keep in touch with me all the time about issues that are important to you. They have come up to see me in Tallahassee when I'm serving in Tallahassee, and I really appreciate that. You know, I feel like I'm coming home, because I started my political career at the local government level. I served as a mayor of a local city, councilwoman of a different city. So I understand the challenges they face, but I understand how important it is for us to keep in touch with us. So I want to thank you, Mayor, and city council. You're a city manager. I mean, they have an open-door policy. Anything we need, any information we need, they will give to us. So thank you again. Thank you very much once again. And I'm not going to let Pat O'Neill leave. Pat, where are you? Can you come up here, Pat? If your Eagle Scouts get a medal, you get a medal too, Pat.
I was jealous.
Senator, I want to present you with our city pin as well.
I will wear it proudly.
So when we come up to Tallahassee next year, we expect to see that pin on you.
Remember that.
All right.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Very, very much.
Sure, sure, sure. Another thing I'd like to recognize as well is the parents of these Scouts. We know that they could not be where they are today if it was not for the parents. And I'd like all the parents that are here with their kids to please rise. Even the grandparents that are here. Please rise. Now, for you parents, since the boys probably won't listen to this. The city of Rockledge is requesting Boy Scout Troop 321 participate in the 2018 Memorial Day Celebration. Sunday, May the 27th, at 1:30 PM, assemble and receive specific assignments of that team at the Larry Schultz Park on Fifth Boulevard. They need to be in Class A uniform, and their assignments are going to lead the Pledge of Allegiance, distribute programs, and hand out bottled water. The 27th Sunday at 1:30. We appreciate anybody you can send us from your troop to help out, because that's a big day. We have a lot of people there, and it goes really quick, and it's really a neat program, and there's a lot of neat people that will be there as well. We're hoping the senator will show up this year as well. The invitations is out to her. All right? Thank you, guys. I'm going to call about a five-minute break so you guys can... I know you don't want to hang around and watch the rest of this stuff, but call the five-minute breaks so the family can leave, okay? But you're welcome to stay if you want to. Okay, we want to start this meeting back up again, Lisa?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, I got two merril proclamations to read out. I'd like for our first one to be VJ Kureki. Come on up, VJ. VJ is our Storm Order Coordinator for Public Works. American Public Works Association, whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Florida. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees from state and local governments and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, public water, treatment centers, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest of citizens, civic leaders, and children in Florida to gain knowledge of and to maintain progressive interests and understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Week since 1960. Now, therefore, I, Thomas J. Price, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Rockledge, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through May 27th, 2018, as National Public Works Week in the city of Rockledge, and I urge all of our people to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Thank you very much. Is Matthew Saunders in the audience? I don't see him. This is another proclamation. Parental Alienation Awareness Month, April 2018, presented to the citizens of Rockledge. Whereas alienating behaviors often found in high conflict divorce and custody situations can cause mental and emotional anguish to children, depriving them of their right to love and be loved by both parents. And whereas parental alienation takes advantage of the suggestibility and dependency of children and deprives them of their right to love and be loved by both parents. And whereas parental alienation is considered harmful to children, robbing them of their sense of security, and can affect them into adulthood with tragic consequences. And whereas childhood establishes the integral fundamental understanding, concepts, and importance of gender, religious, economical, and racial equality. Whereas Parental Alienation Awareness Month is intended to increase knowledge and understanding of the problem and to help parents, caregivers, and social services providers stop the abuse of innocent children caught in the crossfire of people they love. Now, therefore, I, Thomas J. Price, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Rockledge, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Parental Alienation Awareness Month in the city of Rockledge, and call its significance to the attention of all our citizens. And we'll make sure that Mr. Saunders gets this. Thank you very much. Alicia Blattler. Come on up, Alicia. Special recognition to the city of Rockledge. Alice, come on up. Alice Deakins.
My name is Alicia Blattler. I am Director of Workplace Giving for United Way of Brevard County. Mr. Mayor, council members, Dr. Fettro, thank you very much for having me here today. I am here actually to honor the city of Rockledge for your contributions to the community. We recently held our awards celebration just a couple of weeks ago to celebrate our 2017 campaign where our community banded together to raise over $5.8 million for social programs. And the city of Rockledge is an incredible partner of ours and has been a longtime partner. And we were very proud to recognize your city and Corporal Alice Deakins and the Rockledge Police Department for leading the campaign here, and we honored you with our highest campaign recognition, our Campaign Excellence Award, for the contributions of city employees and for investing so much time and energy and enthusiasm into your efforts to raise funds for people in need here in Brevard County. The city has been an incredible supporter for many years, a very longtime partner, but over the last few years has injected a lot of energy into your campaign and your fundraising efforts, appointing and encouraging new volunteers and a new committee every year to get involved in the effort, and making it a priority to educate and inform and inspire every employee in every department. And for the last two years, each of the last two years, the city has doubled their fundraising efforts, raising over $12,000 in this past campaign. So we really appreciate everything that you do, and we especially recognize Corporal Alice Deakins for this. And we presented the award at the event, so I don't... You have it already. I don't have it to give it to you again. But I'm really excited, because I did some quick math in my car, and I realized that if you keep doubling your campaign every year, it will only be seven years before you pass the million-dollar mark. So I think there's... No pressure, no pressure. But in all seriousness, it's a really big deal to our community, and we appreciate you for being the leadership and supporting those efforts. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Alicia. I appreciate that. And I wanted to also recognize Alice Deakins, come on up, for representing the city of Rockledge that night. They said that you were very impressive that night, and they really appreciated it. And we appreciate it as a city council as well, okay?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sean Fleming. He's going to give us a report on our employee health clinic.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, Mr. Mayor, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. So tonight, we wanted to give you a just quick overview. We're about a year into the employee health clinic. So we wanted to just give you guys a little bit of a snapshot of kind of what's going on, talk about some of the impacts of the program. I'm going to try and go quick and not have anyone fall asleep, but feel free to stop me with questions at any point. So just today, we do want to talk about, we can't really look at the health clinic without looking at the overall impact it's having on the medical plan and what's going on in the medical market. So we want to talk a little bit about that, then talk a little bit about some of the initial utilization and return on investment information. Matthew, maybe you can... There we go. Matthew's my backup here if I'm out of range. So just real quick, a little bit of the landscape, what's going on overall with the healthcare insurance market. We're still seeing pretty significant increases. Although they're down compared to going back about 10 or 11 years, we're still seeing average price increases at about 6.5% in the market compared to CPI, which is less than half of that. So it's important to always keep that in mind as we talk about insurance. Moving on to the next slide, just a little bit more of what's driving some of that. There's a lot of factors. I won't read through each of them, but, you know, demographics, wages, the overall job market. As unemployment drops, wages are going up. Some people have more money to spend on healthcare that's driving prices up. Lifestyle is obviously a big part of that. And then the last part, I think, is noteworthy, as you talk about payment models. What the industry as a whole is really talking about is getting away from fee-for-service, meaning I go to the doctor, and the more things they do, the more it ends up costing, and the more I end up paying them. So the industry as a whole is trying to figure out, how do we get to more of a value-based model where we pay providers because they get people healthier? Not just because somebody came in and they ran as many tests as possible. The reason I think that's noteworthy is that's exactly what we're doing in the health clinic already. So we're ahead of the industry in a lot of ways. So moving on to the next slide, that's just a little background, a little bit more for anybody that's not familiar. The city of Cocoa had started their health clinic going back in September 2014. The city of Rockledge joined in February of 2017. And then Satellite Beach, we opened up that second location in March. So the first month, it was only the Cocoa location. And just to kind of refresh, what we have is, we call it a partially self-funded plan for the medical. And what that allows us to do is if we shift claims to the health clinic, we don't have them incur in the medical plan. So we're not really creating a new expense. We're looking at shifting those costs over the long term. So moving on to the next one, how are we doing overall looking at the medical? This is pretty noteworthy to look at. So we take the claims on the plan every year and divide it by the number of employees on the plan. So we have a consistent number if employee count goes up or down. And we look at those claims costs. So in 2014, we averaged about $534 per employee per month. And then we went up quite a bit in 2015. As you take a look, 2016, we dropped down, and then 2017, we put in the health center, and we had a 24% reduction. So we're almost... We're actually slightly below where we were four years ago. Wasn't the prettiest path to get there in some regards. You know, claims went up quite a bit, but most entities, when you look at this, still have spikes, but their lines going up at a significantly higher angle, 8% to 9% per year. So overall, things are running pretty well on that end. So Matthew goes. So as we dig into that a little bit deeper, just a couple of things. Last year, our medical spend on the medical plan decreased over $205,000, which was a 14% reduction. Our pharmacy spend decreased $119,000, so an 18.1% reduction there. We also had a 42% reduction in catastrophic claims. So those are things like your cancers, your higher-cost conditions. And we had a 12% reduction in primary care visits. So overall, just on this page, just looking at two items, you know, we had over a $300,000 reduction. So it's one way we kind of look at the return on investment. If we take... If Matthew will drive us to the next slide there. So as we want to look a little bit more now what's going on in the clinic. So we do have an interlocal agreement with Cocoa, Satellite Beach, and Cocoa Beach, which gives us those expanded hours, more than we would have in two locations to go to. The next bullet, I think, is always important to note. Based on the actual utilization, the costs are actually divvied up at the end of the year. So if one city uses significantly more than the initial split we did, which was based on employee count, nobody's left kind of holding those costs. It's assigned to the city that had the utilization. Of that utilization, in the health center that we had, though, 86% of Rockledge's visits were from employees. So only 14% were from dependents. So of kind of our takeaways, one of the big things is we want to continue to push and make sure that spouses, children even, that they know that this offering is out there and actually make an effort to get out there, because we see the results it gives us on the medical plan. So of our takeaways, that's probably the biggest one. probably the biggest one, is to promote and make sure we get dependents and spouses in there utilizing that. And then this year, as we look at the actual utilization, we'll show you some more of the info. We've actually seen about a 9% spike in the first quarter of 2018. So as we rolled this out, I think for those of you who are here, kind of remember, you know, it wasn't going to be instant. It was going to take time. It takes time. You know, people may have relationships with providers. They may not be seeing a provider. So getting that in and really building that up takes a little bit of time. And we're seeing that continued growth, which is really what we're looking for. So looking at the utilization, one measure that we look at is capacity. So capacity is how many appointments do we have available in the clinics and how many are being used? And what that tells us is, do we have enough time available? So can people call? Can people get in? So it's a little bit hard to see from this distance, at least with my vision. Some of you may be better than me. The middle line is the combined utilization, that dark blue. So overall, December, obviously December drops with the holidays. But overall, you'll see, you know, we're in the high 50s to mid 60s. So about 61% of the spots are being utilized. If you can see those little bit more faint lines, what you will see is the city of Cocoa location is being used more than the Satellite Beach location right now. So one of the things we've done is with the provider, KARETC, is if people call for an appointment, we've asked them to remind people, hey, you have Satellite Beach available. We can get you in today. It might be two days for Cocoa. So we want to continue promoting that location. Obviously, Cocoa's a little bit closer for your employees, but we still want them to know that it is available. So overall, right now, what this also tells us is we don't see any need probably in the next six to 12 months to add any more hours. So we're pretty good where we are. So this slide, what we're looking at here is actually the breakout of the four cities and the utilization. So this goes through December. This is a little bit why we talked about the increased utilization this quarter because things have picked up quite a bit for the city. You'll see, so the numbers represent what percentage of the slots the city of Rockledge was using. And you'll see, it trailed off a little bit towards the end of the year because we did such a big push in the beginning. People got in. You know, we had months at 21%, 33%. Overall, we're seeing that stabilize a little bit. But I think, you know, to the prior slide, what we really want to do is make sure that the dependents know that this is available and are getting in there because that accounts for a little bit of the difference. The good news, though, is with the pricing, the city isn't paying extra if their utilization is a little bit lower. The other cities that use more pick that up in those months. So just kind of a real quick summary, we do look at return on investment in a number of ways. I think the most important way really is looking at the impact on the medical plan. We had over $300,000 in savings on the medical plan, you know, which is well more than our cost of the health center. If we look at just kind of a hard dollar return on investment, where are we at? So what we're looking at there is, what did the service cost in the market and what did it cost in the clinic? We're at about a 90 cent to every dollar return on investment. It's right at about where we expect in the first year. In the second year, we expect that hard dollar to be a little over a dollar and then up to about a dollar 50 in the third year and on. It takes a while. So a lot of times in the beginning, people will try it, but they're still going to their doctor. So we don't see that pick up quite as much. But again, we had savings on the medical plan that more than tripled the, or doubled the expense of being in the clinic. So we're not concerned with that. 24% reduction in plan costs. And then the last one, I just kind of close with and like to hit on, is remember employees on the medical plan have co-pays for pharmaceuticals, for office visits. We calculated how much the employees have saved. They've saved over $22,000 in those first 11 months. So overall, tremendous benefit to the employee, especially recruiting and retention as the job market gets tighter. Having some of those added benefits really go a long way. So with that, I know I went fast because I know you all have a busy agenda and I know you guys like to be on time. Wish all of our groups were that way, but we give you kudos for that. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one. When you talked about appointments and utilization, I think 63% of the, the appointment time was utilized. Do they take walk-ins? If you wake up in the morning and you feel like you might be coming down with a flu, can you walk in?
So they take same-day appointments. So what they ask is that the people still call. Say, hey, I'd like to come in today. What's the best time? Instead of just walking in, you know, typically the reason being, because there's labs done in the clinic, those morning spots tend to be booked ahead of time because people need to fast. The afternoon spots tend to be more open typically. So that's why they may want you to call in and we'll say, hey, we can get you in at 1:00. But if you came in at 8:00, they might be booked all the way till 12:30. So, but you can get a same-day appointment.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Sean. I guess there's nothing. Appreciate the presentation. Okay, let's move on with our agenda. Financial budget report, none this month. Public hearings, ordinances and resolutions. We have a resolution supporting Satellite Beach Resolution Number 1000, supporting statewide managed coastal retreat policy and funding for critically eroded areas.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Excuse me. Offer a resolution titled Support for Satellite Beach Resolution Number 1000, Supporting a Statewide Managed Coastal Retreat Policy and Funding for Critically Eroded Areas. And I offer it to waive the reading and adopt the resolution.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Joe, you're getting by tonight. B, resolution formalizing action taken by city council on April 18, 2018 regarding the residency of the city manager.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'd like to offer a resolution formalizing action taken by the city council on April 18, 2018 regarding residency of the city manager. And I'd like to move and to waive the, the reading and the adoption and adopt the resolution.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Call for the question.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. One, one opposed. Reports from boards and committees? Who's going to give me reports?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to be in receipt of the minutes of the following meeting. Code Enforcement Board Minutes Meeting on April 12, 2018. The Rockledge Environmental Enhancement Tree Board Minutes of Meeting on April 12, 2018. Board of Adjustment Minutes of Meeting on April 17, 2018. Community Redevelopment Agency Board of Commissioners Minutes of Meeting on April 25, 2018. And consider independently any recommendations contained therein.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Our first recommendation is Year 2017/18 Redevelopment Agency Budget. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So Mayor and Council, the budget amendment that the CRA board recommends is the movement of $19,000 into the engineering services line from the Barnes Boulevard enhancement line. As you all know, the Barnes Boulevard project is essentially complete. It still allows Barnes Boulevard, that line, to have plenty of money for subsequent landscaping that the city is committed to doing. It would take that line from $175,000 to $156,000. So there's plenty of money in that line. That's one item. And then the second item was to take from the neighborhood improvements line of $125,000 and move it into the civic hub construction line and to take that line from $300,000 to $425,000. As you all, I think, may have heard, but the civic hub project, we're moving along, there were three quotes given for the land clearing next door, of which the CRA board approved for the low quote to get it, ABC Land Clearing, for $19,100. And so the hope is to also move forward with constructions shortly thereafter. So in this fiscal year. So that's why the recommendation to the CR board and their recommendation to you all to help that work get done. Back to you, Mayor.
Okay. So everybody's heard what we're doing with this budget amendment. Anybody have any questions of the city manager? Everybody understand what we're doing with the budget amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
I move to accept the recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Unfinished business, none. Consent business. Mr. Dasky.
Yes, sir. Move for the approval of these consent business items. First one's modification of letter of recommendation dated March 15, 2018, renaming Cocoa High School Stadium as the Richard Dick Blake Stadium. Next is the declaration of surplus property and subsequent sale or recycling, the scrapping of said property, legally impounded vehicles for the Department of Public Safety Police Division. And next is the additional change order replacement of wastewater treatment, plant generator cores and temporary generator for use during replacement process, wastewater treatment department.
Second the motion. Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. This is consent business. There is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. New business, none tonight. Petitions, remonstrances and communications. At this time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to their city council about anything to do with the city of Rockledge? Now is your time to come forward. Is there anybody in the audience?
Except Pat.
Except Pat that would like to speak to their city council. See you none. Let's move on. Report, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could invite Chief Lasada up for a moment.
We'll turn it up, too.
Okay. What, what Chief Lasada is showing you is after a design team, including firefighters and the like, Chief Lasada, myself, we both independently went and looked at several fire stations throughout Brevard County and worked with W&amp;J. And this is the rendering that we are recommending to council. To our right of the rendering would be Fisk Boulevard. And so the two bay doors, the two red bay doors would face Fisk Boulevard. The, if you can see it there, Dr. Smith, the 36 on the left, if you will, our left, would be facing north. So that's kind of how the layout of it would be. It would include a metal roof. It, I want to say the wind load was 150?
160.
160, yeah. Very, very secure. And even inside, although the rendering cannot depict it, on the inside of the bay, there are some cedar, like wood, beams, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Wood beams that would give it some really cool personality, even on the inside. And so I'm also, as you look at the rendering, I'm also happy to report that in working with W&amp;J and Ken Poole, shout out and a thank you to Ken Poole, we can do some site work. As you know, the, the clearing is going on now, but the site work can be done internally and/or subbed out if needed. But I'm happy to report that the price that W&amp;J we have settled on is exactly $1.491 million. So if you all were to approve that rendering tonight, we'll get a sign up on the site saying coming soon and we will give W&amp;J the notice to proceed. So I'd be happy for council to give me feedback, input, what you like, what you don't like, if you wish for anything to be changed. Anyway.
Mr. Chairman. Anybody have any questions, city manager? Frank?
I was just going to go ahead and make a motion that we accept the recommendation and proceed with the work on the fire station.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Sammy, you understand what we're doing here?
Yes.
Ted?
I like the coming soon sign because people have been asking.
Good-looking building.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Wait a minute, Joe, you don't get a vote.
Well, I, and I want to comment, you know, when we first started talking about this, we were afraid it was going to cost us considerably more than that. So I want to thank the staff. The staff, I think, has done a great job in putting this together and saving us some money.
We are beyond excited and thank you, council, for your support. We'll get that sign up as quickly as we can. So citizens, don't call y'all, or, or at least you can give them good news when they do call. And I appreciate that very much.
Lisa, have you put that, have you put that on the website or can you put that on the website now, a picture of that rendering?
It's my fault, Mayor. I, I said I didn't want to release anything until the council saw it first. And if, if you all approved, so we'll do it right away.
Good. Great. Thank you. Yes.
Just a couple more things, Mayor and Council. Just, okay, how about three?
Three.
Okay. Sorry. Quickly, please mark your calendars. Tentatively, June 28th will be a public meeting here regarding Fisk Boulevard with FDOT. Just wanted to get that on y'all's calendar. As soon as it's officially confirmed, we'll put it out on the website and everything else. Also, just quickly, June 1st, the Central Brevard NAACP banquet. If anyone is interested in attending that, we've received notice of that event as well. And lastly, if you all recall, a citizen of ours, Gail Stewart Isles, came before the council twice regarding the bus stop down by Publix. So here's the latest information. I spoke with the director of the, well, actually the interim director, regarding that stop. And that bus has been running that way since 2002. It's Route 6. Three buses run every 20 minutes. He really has to push to keep that on schedule. And that is what riders want, is on time and frequency. He said they rarely complain about a shelter or the lack thereof. He's going to work to see if they can build a shelter at the St. Mary's stop, but he cannot come into the, like, the public shopping center in and around, actually, the parking areas in there. So it needs to remain the same there at the, in front of the Publix area.
And as we all know, the biggest problem was the St. Mary's Church. Father King did not want a bus shelter there. So there's new leadership there now. Maybe that can change.
And he's going to approach him and try with that, but we'll see. But that's the latest. And I did speak with Gail actually again today, just to let her know the latest. So those are my three, Mayor. Back to you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, city manager? All right. City Attorney litigation report, there's none tonight. We had enough from him already.
You only think that.
Reports from the diocese. City clerk.
Pass, thank you.
City attorney. We're going to let you speak anyway.
The, there was a case on the litigation report, Mellon Bank versus Mays. Originally, I had done the due diligence to find out whether there's a possibility we might get some money out of it. The money that was owed outweighed the value of the property for, so that essentially Mellon was going to get everything. Dug in a little bit longer. It, it seems there might be a possibility that we could get some money. So I filed an affidavit with the court, appeared, and we got a supplemental, supplemental final judgment. After Mellon has been satisfied, the clerk is to send us any additional funds left over up to our claim, which was $220,000 and $220,200. We're not going to get that much, but we might get something out of it. I just wanted to let you know that I filed that and we may be getting something out of it. And our litigation report, it may be getting smaller and smaller.
Still got the one from 2002, right?
Correct.
All right.
Yeah. Yep. They, they, they dug with it a long time and they've got a rather high amount, Mellon did, for their judgment. But if the clerk sale goes for the way property is these days, it might go above that. And that way, we would get the additional funds after that. They, they were a mortgage war. They were, they were in first. Those was 200, 2012. Arlene was put in place in 15. So it was second to theirs. And, you know, hopefully we'll see some funds out of it.
Good.
Take a shot. All they do is say no.
Thank you, Joe. Councilman Hartzell.
Again, glad to be here. The Arbor Day tree planting went nicely at the Larry Schultz Park honoring Mary Woody. The Arbor Day tree planting went nicely at the Larry Schultz Park honoring Mary Woody. And the event at Trinity Lutheran for Larry was exceptional. There were a lot of people there that were, what's the way to say it? The best of the best. And it's good to see someone honored that way, that people stand up and say, this guy did something great.
This guy made a difference.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Martin.
Pass.
Dr. Smith.
I pass.
Dr. Ferguson.
Good evening, everyone. I want to say without any question, Pat, job well done with those Eagle Scouts. I was thinking, I was a part of 321, but that was 40-plus years ago. But to see the passion and the compassion you have for those guys, man, it's, it's good to see that. It's refreshing. Also, want to remind everyone about National Day of Prayer observance tomorrow here in the council chambers from 1:30 till 2:30. That again is tomorrow from 1:30 to 2:30. All are welcome. Invite someone to come with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dasky.
Pass.
Deputy Mayor Forrester.
Just a couple of words. I was out of town and unable to make it back in time for Larry's funeral. And, you know, for people who, I'm sure there are people around who did not understand how significant, what a significant impact Larry Schultz had on this community. 30-something years, but as council and mayor, involved in almost every organization in the county, it seemed like. Every time you talked to Larry, he was on his way to a board meeting of some sort or another. He was a real leader in this community. And maybe not as important, but as important to me was, he was a good friend of mine and someone who led me into this job, who encouraged me to run for office the first time. And someone that even after he retired, when we had a tough issue coming before the council, I would be lying over to Larry's house, sit down and have a little pow-wow with him about how to approach a particular problem. So Larry is going to be someone that on a personal level, I miss very much. So I just wanted to say that.
Great. Thank you. All right. And before you, the council, you've been given your city attorney performance appraisal worksheet. And I think you're supposed to have it back to me by May?
May 11th.
May 11th, right. So if you could get that done, I'd appreciate it so I can compile everything and report back to the council at the 26th?
June 6th.
June 6th. June 6th meeting, okay. And report back to you about our city attorney, whether we're going to keep him or not. We're going to probably keep him. We just signed a contract.
I was going to say. You're doing this backwards.
But I did attend Larry's funeral as well and definitely he is going to be missed. And I knew Larry all the way back to the 1970s, I think '78 or '79 when he sat on the council. But Larry was somebody that you can say that he did make a difference. We all, as politicians, ask ourselves every time we come up for reelection, am I making a difference? And if I'm not making a difference, am I just taking up a seat? And I know I ask myself that question every time. And Larry never had to ask himself that question because he knew he was making a difference. And everybody in the community saw it. And I certainly saw it. I mean, I was involved with a lot of things that he was involved in. And like Frank said, he was always going somewhere.